This workshop session of the city council is now in order. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir, no public comments.
Okay. Then let's move to the information discussion. Periodic zoning code review. Mr. Paxton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I wanted to bring this before you for a workshop just to go through some topics that have been brought up by council, brought up by Planning and Zoning Commission, and brought up through staff working with different developments and different projects. Just a handful of items, really just kind of high-level introduction of these topics. Can I get the PowerPoint up? And you've got a copy in front of you as well. So, coming from council on some of the discussions we've had surrounding some of the recent cases, the conditional use permit process, short-term rental update, and some discussion of adjacent properties with different zoning. So, for conditional use permit process, the current process is, of course, goes to Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. That recommendation comes to city council for a public hearing and a resolution for adoption. We have entertained the idea of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing and come to council with no public hearing and just the resolution. There are some cities that handle conditional use permits through an administrative process, although given the way our code is drafted and the different uses that fall under conditional use permits, it's not necessarily our recommendation. If council had any direction on this one, either to leave it as the current process, we can look into the possibility of council not holding the public hearing but just having the item for discussion if that was council's discretion. Otherwise, kind of throw this back to Planning and Zoning Commission.
It seems like if we're having a public hearing at Planning and Zoning, I'm not sure. Tell me, you guys and Drew, what the benefit is of having a second public hearing? So, in other words, this always goes P&amp;Z, council, council, right now? And is that the best? Do you all think that's the best way for us?
What's common? Is there? I mean, I know there's different ways of doing it.
Right.
So, it's really just what we're comfortable with.
That's correct.
Is what we're having.
Again, it ranges from administrative process only, where you are just checking requirements, checking the boxes, and move on to that permit. Other cities actually do it more or less like a zoning change, and it goes through an ordinance with public hearing at P&amp;Z.
That's kind of what it feels like we're doing almost with two.
With the resolution, we only have one hearing at council.
But we do a public hearing, and then we do.
Then do a public hearing again. That's right. If it went to P&amp;Z as a public hearing, if there was any, if the case failed, obviously the applicant would have the opportunity to appeal to council. We certainly don't want to take away that opportunity for the applicant, but.
But they can also speak under the item, right, as well?
That's correct.
One thing I think it does if, oh, I don't know, if for some reason, you know, somebody was not able to be there for that first public hearing, it does give them an opportunity to, you know, to address us. But I have, you know, I have no idea how many times, you know, that happens, and of course, we don't, so.
I just don't know that we've ever changed between first and second readings on anything. I mean, I don't know that we've ever said yes and then no, or no and then, you know. I don't recall us going to a CUP process and going through the first public hearing and approving it, and then going back to the second and saying, never mind.
Are you talking?
I mean, just.
In two public hearings, like the P&amp;Z public hearing?
No, I'm talking about one. I'm talking about, I'm just talking about the council part where we're looking at it, we're looking at it twice.
For resolutions, we only have one public hearing. So, right, we don't have two public hearings?
It doesn't come before us twice now?
No.
Oh, okay.
The zone changes do, the conditional use permits do not.
Sorry, thank you, yep. Forget everything I just said.
You know, personally, I like the council dealing with it after P&amp;Z does. I mean, we respect P&amp;Z, recognize what they have done, and, but to me, it helps me to kind of know what's happening, for instance, with the vacation rentals and other kinds of changes of property. So, you know, I don't always watch the P&amp;Z hearings, but I personally think we ought to continue where it goes, P&amp;Z, and then to council.
And I think with, excuse me, with, because we're entering into this Airbnb world, and that gets, that's part of this, that at least for a while, I think it's, I think it's kind of important to have both of them. Like I said, it gives, if somebody wasn't there that first time, it gives them a chance the second time to express their, you know, plus or minus, whichever it is, and I agree. I think leaving it the way it is is okay.
Yeah, I like the current process, too. It gives another level of accountability directly to their elected officials, too. So, I like the current process.
But this is on the C, this is where I got confused. It says, you said P&amp;Z with public hearing, comma, city council with public hearing and resolution. We do that in one meeting?
That's correct.
We're talking within one meeting.
Within one meeting.
Okay, that's why I was looking at it as two processes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Leave it the way it is.
We don't vote in the workshop, but it looks like there's consensus.
That'll work. And specific to the short-term rentals, one of the things we'd like to recommend is update the definition, to actually remove the bedroom count and add a maximum occupancy. So, the initial definition was based on the number of bedrooms, whether it was one building or multiple buildings. As you've seen, we have a couple that have, you know, two or three little cottages. Looking at the building code side, it's really more of a number of people, a maximum occupancy for the short-term rental, and less about the number of rooms in the structure. So, to not confuse the two, we're making that recommendation.
Does that affect parking?
The bedroom count affects the parking, but removing the limitation on number of bedrooms would not.
But how, what would that number be? How do you determine?
So, the current maximum number in the definition is up to six bedrooms, whereas the building code says a maximum of 10 people.
Right.
So, looking at the building code side, which is a little more restrictive than just, obviously, the bedroom count.
And how do you determine the maximum number of people? Is it by the square footage of the building, or the?
No, anything over 10 is then really looked at as more of a hotel. It's a commercial use. It transfers from the International Residential Code to the International Business Code, or Building Code, excuse me, as a business occupancy, or a, I guess it's actually our occupancy. But that would trigger a fire sprinkler system. So, obviously, then we're not looking at a residential structure anymore. Now, we're looking at a commercial, albeit very small, but really basically a hotel. So, keeping it under 10, or 10 and below, keeps it at that residential scale and doesn't trigger the fire sprinkler system.
But there's nothing to stop you from putting, I mean, if somebody has a little Airbnb that's only 250 square feet, he can cram 10 people in there if he wants?
I don't know on the building code side if there is a maximum per person for residential.
But what you're suggesting is leave it at 10, just take out the bedroom requirement.
Right. So, they would still have to comply with the building code, and I can get back to you on that with our building official.
Okay.
Okay, but, so, okay, what if you did, and we have at least one of those rentals that's very small. So, how does that limit of 10 affect that? I think that's the question.
And that would be back to the building code, and I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'm not familiar enough with that section. One of the other things that we've talked about is possibly adding language in the code for the revocation or to trigger a rehearing back to council based on a number of complaints or citations. If you'd like, we'll carry that conversation forward to P&amp;Z and kind of see how that, what that looks like. And then, one of the other recommendations we've had is to require a local contact, at least within an hour's travel time, for any event or complaint that should occur, that we would have that local contact. We do have some short-term rentals that are actually owned by someone out of state. Most of them are using a local property management of some kind, but actually making that a requirement, that we have somebody that we can get a hold of.
Can they have, can it be shorter than an hour away?
We could, but I think that would start to get pretty restrictive on locations for some of the different management or contacts.
So, they're going to have somebody in Prodigusburg, Bernie, even San Antonio, this side of San Antonio?
Right.
So, they would provide you, how do you know, how are you going to track that phone number? Are you, you're not going to track it?
That would be something we would need to work through.
To work out.
Yeah.
Remember, too, there's a hotel occupancy tax component to this, and so, we do have ongoing communications with these facilities on a really a quarterly or even a monthly basis when those tax revenues are being, coming in. Now, they may be coming in from a corporate entity and not necessarily the property management, but there is some interaction beyond just the CUP process.
And how would you, would you ask them to give you their address of where they are? That way, you could determine whether it's a mile, or an hour away?
Again, these are, these are high-level items for discussion to take forward to planning and zoning. We have not gone through all the details of these.
Okay. I'm just curious about what process they'd have to go through to do that.
Really, all we're doing today is just looking for direction from you guys, if these are topics that you want us to go to planning and zoning to talk about.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I mean, I think a phone contact is a necessity in my book.
Yeah.
Absolutely a necessity.
Looking at adjacent properties with different zoning, if you recall, there's a section in the zoning code that allows the use of one property, although it's in a different zoning district, adjacent and common ownership. We've seen that that actually causes more conflict and more confusion than actually benefits even the property owners. So, just recommending removal of that section due to the confusion that it causes. If you have two adjoining properties that are going to be developed for one use, then the zoning should match, that should be replanted as one lot, and so on.
So, taking out that section, when you're talking about adjoining properties that are currently zoned to different zones, what is the current process and what is the change you're suggesting?
Suggesting that we actually just remove this section altogether.
So, what happens then if I have two pieces of property that are zoned differently and I want to replat into one lot?
You'd have to do a zone case as well.
You'd have to what? Say that again.
You would have to go through a zone case, a zone change for one or the other properties to make the zoning.
So, instead of it just being an either/or, like whichever is the most restrictive use now, it's you just go for the use that you want automatically if you have two different zones? Is that what you're?
To some extent. So, a lot of it's really based on parking or access, not so much the structure, because you can't build over those property lines, but to allow a separate lot for part of those required parking or required access on a different lot with a different land use.
Right. So, when you, when you say remove, what are you, what's going away?
Section 60-41.
What is that, in a nutshell?
It allows, if you have two adjoining properties under common ownership with different zoning, it allows you to use one property for the benefit of the other if it's one use.
Would you consider grandfathering in all the other ones, or would they have to go through the process of?
Anything existing would be grandfathered.
Okay.
Okay. What's the, what's the downside of that for people that own those vacation rentals?
I don't think this would relate to vacation rentals at all, because we're, those, we are looking at an individual property.
Yeah.
That's where it gets, it gets muddy whenever you want to just decide you're going to use one for the benefit of the other. So, we're just saying that no matter what the use is, you have to, it has to be zoned appropriately.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a loophole, then, around the zoning requirement, right? So, we're trying to cut that off.
Could be muddied up, yeah.
Right, could be used that way.
Depending upon the situation, it's either, can get very confusing, or, there are some examples that would be fairly simple, but.
Right.
Again, to benefit the development community and staff working with them, just removing this.
Go for the zoning first, yeah.
Yeah.
Bottom line, there's really, there's no downside to this.
I don't believe so.
It just makes them have to go for a zoning change where they might not have had to before.
Right.
But it eliminates, but it eliminates any kind of muddying the waters of those kinds of zones and thinking you can automatically use one to benefit another.
Let me say this, too. The most common, and Drew can correct me, the most common use for an adjacent property is going to be parking or storage. So, it's not like you have two properties bisected by a zoning line, and all of a sudden, that lets that other property completely in. It's just going to be kind of accessory uses.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission, one thing that they brought up is trying to improve the notice to the public when there's a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So, a lot of communities do signs similar to these you see on the screen or in your packet, just posting the property with some kind of signage that says, "This property is involved in upcoming public hearing. Go look at this website or call this office," you know, whatever the case is. So, obviously, we'd have to work through the details of how and when and how long the signs remain and so on.
Yes, yes. I just think it's, it's being transparent. So, good. I'm glad you heard that.
So, just adding one more, one more level of notification for the public.
Yes.
I mean, obviously, we do website, newspaper, bulletin board, letters to adjacent property owners, but that still may not catch the neighbor of the next block over driving by.
I guess we'll then have to take into account who's responsible for the cost of putting up the signs.
Right.
And if it's a legal notice, with this, if this would be considered a legal notice, if it were to come down due to a storm, would the legal notice then be voided and we'd have to start over?
It's not required by state law, so it would be an additional notice.
Okay.
So, I don't think there'd be any impact there.
Okay, good.
Obviously, part of our recommendation and discussion with P&amp;Z will be, is it a staff duty, or is it the applicant's duty to go out and post the property?
Okay.
To be worked out.
Yes. And a handful of items that we've come across, like I said, working with different projects and developments, kind of roll through some of these. We had a request from Shriner University through former council member Cochran as well to view shipping containers, specifically in the public and institutional zoning district. Obviously, it's a pretty broad zoning district for that public and institutional use, but coming from Shriner University, you can see that bottom picture, they actually started working on, use the laser if it'll show up, putting in a shipping container at the ballfields for some of their athletic equipment storage. Didn't know that it required permit, were applying for their mechanical and electrical permits and so on. That's how we knew about it. But as you can see from the photo and even driving by, and that's zoomed in pretty good, it really does blend in with the dugouts and the ballfield and everything else. It's very hard to see. This top picture is one that's been, I'd say it's been there at least four or five years, so it would be grandfathered. But obviously, just color matching like the one below, I think kind of the message here is there's an easy, a good clean way to use them, and there are necessary other ways that are, that stand out more. As we look specifically at how that impacts the public and institutional districts, kind of that teal or aqua color you see on the screen, the PI district is all over town and ranges from Shriner campus all the way down to some of our small neighborhood churches. So, we'll definitely work with P&amp;Z on discussing some parameters of when that would be appropriate. I think the biggest question or direction, if council has a preference at this point, do we want this to be something that is a conditional use permit case by case, or should we come up with some parameters or requirements that if they check those boxes, it is allowed by right?
And so, basically, this would be done by you guys? I mean, it wouldn't come to us.
If we went the requirement route, it would be done by staff, correct?
Yes.
For example, if we didn't.
We'd make it a checklist, or we'd make it a conditional use?
And I don't think this is something that would need to come to council, so, I mean, personally.
What do you, what do you, what do you see and think staff as far as that goes?
I think because oftentimes, they're more or less temporary, maybe for, you know, a few months or even just a few years. I don't know that it raises to the level of a conditional use permit. I think with some reasonable requirements, we could get.
Or such as like screening or aesthetics type?
Yeah. Screening, color matching, setbacks, not having it in front of the building and rather behind or to the side of a building, things like that. Looked at some other communities, and they have similar type requirements. Obviously, it requires building permits so that they're permanently anchored and so on. I think we could come up with a reasonable list that would lessen that impact and actually looks more like a structure rather than just a temporary container sitting out there.
My concern would be that I've seen it get out of hand, particularly commercially, but all of a sudden, you start seeing, you know, bunches of these.
The current zoning code does not restrict them in residential districts. Commercial, C1, C2, and C3, they are, they are prohibited for outside storage. In industrial manufacturing, they are allowed with proper screening and setbacks, and then what we're looking to, looking at is public and institutional with proper screening and setbacks and so on, would that be appropriate?
So, you're only looking at the one change?
Just the one district. That's correct. The public and institutional.
With, and I don't want to put you on the spot, if this, if we go this route, would Doyle have been allowed to put in the pod that we put in beside the?
Generally, we allow them during a construction project.
Oh, okay, so that would be okay.
So, that is a temporary use that comes with the construction, the building permit.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, that is a separate use.
That's separate, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it's not shipping containers, although I've been asked.
Sometimes they are. Yeah, sometimes they're pods, the shipping containers, any of those type temporary storage units, under a building permit, they are allowed. This would be more permanent storage, or at least long-term storage.
Okay.
That's not related to a construction project.
Okay, I've been asked if shipping containers could be used for housing?
If they can make them meet the building code, then yes.
Okay.
Back on the other uses that we're not touching, are there already some requirements that go along with that usage, the way that you're talking about implementing in the PI district?
The industrial and manufacturing does have some screening requirements.
Okay.
And, or screening and setback requirements. So, that'd be kind of our starting point for the public and institutional.
We, but you have a permitted use in residential, so what exactly does that mean?
There are no restrictions in residential.
Really?
That's correct. So, then, just looking at building permits, building code, and setbacks.
I'm just a little, I would be very, I'm usually a little hesitant on creating more restrictions for property owners. So, this would be something that I would have to look at very carefully and see a lot of the details on. I don't know, because we don't have a detailed, you know, plan about what this would look like, I'm just not usually in favor of continuing to add more restrictions.
Right now, they're not allowed, so we're looking to allow them, and working through that discussion with planning and zoning through the public hearing process, how does that fit Curville?
Right.
So, the request is, can we allow them in this district? Do we want to consider that or not?
Yeah, we're not taking anything away. We're adding something.
Right, right. I was just making that comment. So, what are these, so these two, we have the, on the pictures that you showed us, what, those are technically not allowed right now?
Correct. One of them is grandfathered, one of them has been put on hold until this is considered by the Planning Commission and City Council.
How long has it been on hold? Do we know?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, what about building heights?
Yeah, that one real quick.
Do you have a good feel on that, Drew?
I do.
You're okay? Okay, good.
So, the building height in the public and institutional district, if you recall going to the code review committee, code review committee and the consultant really dug in on height restrictions and setbacks for each of the, or each non-residential district. As we went through those iterations, as best I can tell, the public and institutional district was missed with that final iteration. It actually is, currently has a maximum height of 35 feet. If it's adjacent to residential, if they increase setback, they can increase height. However, the other non-residential districts, if they're not adjacent to residential, they actually have no limit on height. So, just wanted to make that align with the other districts. So, we're recommending that we basically align that with the C3 or somewhere similar to that for the public and institutional district. And that's that graphic that's, one of the graphics that's in the zoning code to explain that setback in that height as you move further away from residential properties, they can be taller. But if they're not adjacent to residential, there is no height limit in the other commercial and industrial districts. Traffic impact analysis, we discussed this quite a bit with the subdivision ordinance as it relates to the subdivision of property. One of the questions that came up at P&amp;Z and council was how does that relate to a zoning project? If there is no subdivision of land, where are the triggers for a traffic to impact analysis? So, at least as kind of a starting point, we'd recommend that TIA worksheet is required for planned development district requests, mixed-use zoning requests. Both of those do require a concept plan, so the applicant would have to have a pretty firm idea of what types of uses they're wanting, making that worksheet very easy to fill out. Other thresholds that we may look at from other communities, whether it's an acreage, if it's a 10, 15, 20-acre zone change request, they need to do the research and do a traffic to impact analysis worksheet or further. We could do more research on that to see kind of what, what's consistent through other communities.
Well, see, that can be hard, right, though, on a zone change request if you're not doing a PD?
Yes.
Because you, if you're just looking for a general usage, you might not be able to be as specific, right? So, that, are you looking at that as a staff option based on the, what's presented, like a case by case?
And that's where we'll look at some other comparable cities, just to see how they're handling those.
Because, I mean, those first two are obvious. If somebody's going to look for a PD, you know, they know what they want to do.
Exactly.
So, they should know what kind of traffic they're going to generate.
Other communities, I've just kind of brief researched, they may defer the TIA from the zone change down to the building permit, and so then, any traffic impact will have to be mitigated with the building permit instead. And that may be where we head, but just the kind of initial research, we certainly thought the planned development, the mixed use, the applicant knows the intention of the use of that property.
Yeah.
As we'll keep that, that third bullet, kind of keep that one open as we continue researching and discuss with P&amp;Z.
Good.
Before we move away from that, this may or may not be related, I'm not sure, but Red Citizens in Riverobles RV Park complained in terms of traffic, large trucks coming down that hill behind them, and they're braking, and it's just, it's loud. And you've got some of those residences right up there next to, above Ken Stople Ford. Anything can be done to that? Is that, would that require traffic analysis?
Wouldn't be a traffic to analysis on that, but we could certainly look into other, other mitigating options.
If, I don't know what you're specifically referring to, but if those are air brakes.
Yeah.
Then some cities do control those. And, you know, prohibit those, and then you, you probably want to hear from the police chief about that, because it'll be under his enforcement, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Another one that's at least come up is in discussion, not that it's, we've had any issues with it, but garage sales was in the old zoning code, and it was not included in the rewrite of the zoning code for the length of time a garage sale may occur, or how many may occur. The old code had a three-day maximum and no more than four garage sales per year. Obviously, we need to suggest putting that back in the code. If the zoning code's the best place for it, we can do that through this process. If we think it needs to go elsewhere, we can certainly.
And Drew, is that per location or per person?
That's a good question. I would, I would imagine it's per location.
Okay.
How do you track that? How did we track that before?
It's pretty much based on complaints. So, if we get a complaint that the neighbor's doing it every weekend, obviously, code enforcement will, will make that effort to track that and keep an eye on it, but. Fencing, one thing we'd like to look at is adding some illustrations in the zoning code and adding definitions of ornamental fence and screening fence. Here's an example of ornamental fence. One of the other things we'd like to add to the code, just for clarification, is that an ornamental fence may include a brick, rock, concrete, or some solid base. As we've kind of discussed, the different definitions of fencing, some people would read it as that. Some people would read it as that this type of combination fence is not allowed if you're only defining a fence in this manner. So just trying to clarify what the expectation is for citizens.
But this, the one, the last one you showed, the one after that. I mean, this would be, is allowable?
Yes, this is allowed.
Yes.
The issue we have is we don't have a clear definition of what this is.
Okay.
To make use fence.
Through the, through illustrations and new definitions, I think we can get there.
Okay, good.
So if you're talking about an ornamental fence, where does the 36-inch start? From the base of the, of the brick, or from the base of the ground?
This section would try to clarify that.
Okay.
That the solid base can be 30 inches tall.
30?
The maximum height is still six feet.
Okay.
So that way you don't have, you're not creating any visibility issue with the solid base, but you do have the option.
Solid 30, maximum height six, okay.
Looking at RV parks, a couple of different things that have just come up through, again, looking at some projects. There's not a clear section in our zoning code as to an RV park. We have a section that relates to the actual use of a travel trailer or an RV, but not as it relates to your actual parks, where they're going to, short-term, long-term, either way. Want to clarify that in those designated RV parks, there's not a length-of-stay limitation. The zoning code does limit the length of a stay for an RV in a residential neighborhood of 14 days. But that does not specifically relate to an RV park. And then in conjunction with that, there are some references to the FIRE code, and there's a chapter of the NFPA that is specifically designed, or illustrates and gives design guidelines for RV parks. So it'd be a nationwide guideline. Everything from pavement widths, turning radiuses, parking pads, separation between utilities, and so on. So that when someone's looking to build an RV park, we would have a simple, consistent standard that we could give them.
Would that be an actual zone, like a new zone to be added?
No, just in the supplementary section for, there's already a section for travel trailers and RVs. So we'll include it in that more than likely as far as how they're treated as an RV park. There are zoning, multiple different zoning districts where an RV park is allowed, either by right or by conditional use. This would just set those requirements for whatever district it's in. And the NFPA would actually be a building code adjustment, but just coincide with this discussion. So that when they ask, we've got clear guidelines we can give them as to how the FIRE code applies, how the parking pads need to be situated, and so on.
To be clear, the existing RV parks would be grandfathered.
That's correct.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, we have, in Kirk County, we have more RV spaces than we do hotel rooms. So it involves a lot of people.
And Drew, on the residential area of 14 days, so somebody can live in one for 14 days. If you've got company, they could, they can be in the street, or?
It's on private property.
On private property. But they can't be in the street for 14 days?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And we have no restrictions whatsoever for parking an empty RV in the city, other than on private property?
That's correct.
Doesn't have to be screened, doesn't have to be anything?
That's correct. And the last one I've got is update to the land use table itself. Just recommending we add medical office to the public and institutional district. Really looking at towards the hospital area. Some of that area is owned, public and institutional, that's not directly related to the hospital. Obviously, there's plenty of medical offices in there, so recommending that addition.
Is that in a different zoning?
It is allowed in the commercial districts as well.
Okay.
And then with these topics, our goal is to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission October 21st to start that discussion and details of each of these. Hopefully, coming back to council December 14th for the first reading and January for the second. Any questions?
No, thank you. These are good changes.
But I feel like, having gone through the code review process and voting on it all, that since these were not dealt with, we may need to reduce the pay to that committee. No, I need to be clear, we're not paying committees. And they did a good job.
They did, absolutely. Thank you very much.
This effort is, again, you know, just a testament to that these are living documents, right? They're not set in stone, and they need to stay pertinent to the community, and this community is committed, the city's committed to continuing to bring these items back and making sure that they're fresh and up to date and applicable to today's standards.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, because I think what I hear when Drew says this, or experiences that he's had, where instead of saying that we can't do this, use a reasonable approach to how can we do this, if it makes sense? And that's what I hear happening, so I appreciate that.
Easy to do business with. Yes, listening to the public is important there. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Folkerts is going to present the downtown memorial brick update?
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in front of you the presentation that I've put together for the memorial brick update. Just to provide a little bit of history, the downtown Kerrville Memorial Brick Program started in 1993 as a fundraising project to support the Main Street program budget. The goal of that program was to incorporate the named memorial bricks donated by individual citizens to the sidewalks downtown. Funding from this program assisted in supporting downtown beautification projects, including the Texas Star Water and Earl Garrett Street, which is pictured on the slide. The initial bricks that were purchased were a DeHannus brick, and it was made of a soft mortar that over time was easily chipped and eroded by the weather. In early 2000s, there was a newly purchased brick that had additional concrete in the composition that was used to attempt the stem of the erosion, although the tree roots and heavy vehicles have continued to cause brick damages over the years. And we just wanted to clarify that the people who purchased the memorial brick paid $50, and on that initial order form, there was nothing on there mentioning perpetual care. The next talks about the inventory that we currently have. So right now, we have a working document that's from the 1995, and that shows that there's roughly 3,035 engraved bricks downtown. As of fall 2019, it was notated that 303 bricks were damaged or in need of replacement. This number has not been reevaluated since that time. I did want to also let you all know that the only information collected in the existing database just goes over the location and the name of the purchaser. We don't actually have the exact inscription that was purchased. We don't have any records of what they ordered to be put on those bricks, just the names of the purchasers. So unless we're directly notified from the purchaser that their brick was damaged or unreadable, we have no way of replacing these and knowing what was put on these bricks initially. It should also be noted that there was no paper or digital records kept of these purchases, so the accuracy of our database is unknown. And it has been identified that there's some missing purchase information in that database since we started looking at this.
And Megan, how many are, is that number, is that the 300? Is there a 300 number?
The 300 is what was identified as being damaged or unreadable in 2019.
But do we have a number of those that we have no record of?
We don't.
A ballpark number, no?
No, ma'am.
And this was under city supervision, through a city department?
Yes.
What department was this done under?
It was the Main Street program is who started this in 95.
Okay, that's the program.
I'm sorry, they didn't start it in 95, it was in the early 90s.
Okay.
95 is when they, when they put together the database, the first database we're working now.
Right, okay.
So a basic timeline of the issue, in fall of 2019, the first concern was raised at the first reconvening of the Main Street Advisory Board about the deteriorating condition of the bricks along the downtown area. In 2020, a lot of the Main Street Advisory Board meetings were canceled due to the pandemic. So in January of 2021, an ad hoc subcommittee of the Main Street Advisory Board was formed to provide a recommendation on how to proceed with the memorial brick program. In May of 2021, the city applied for a community development block program, which is specifically for downtown pedestrian and sidewalk improvements. And we did have a project listed in there to help mitigate the damaged bricks at tree wells and other identified sidewalk areas. And in June 2021, the recommendation by the Brick Ad Hoc Subcommittee was approved at the Main Street Advisory Board.
Megan, before you go on.
Sure.
This, this statement here that says, "Missing purchase information has been identified during this most recent compilation of data." Is there an amount attached to that?
So I'm still shuffling through that. I just have identified through that that people who claim they have bricks downtown, it's not in our database. So it's, we, we're uncovering that there is some missing information, and I'm not sure how far back that goes.
Okay.
I think it's important to remember that, you know, when some of these initial ordering occurred, we were on essentially a computerless system. I mean, these were written by paper and 25-year-old files. So it's a little bit of a research assignment. About the best inventory we have is, we had interns literally going up and down the road marking brick names, you know, about a year ago, so. It's definitely a deficit of information there.
Yes. Okay. Next, I did want to provide you verbatim what the recommendations were at the Main Street Advisory Board meeting, but I'll just paraphrase those for you tonight. So what they came up with was to assess the level of interest among the citizens. So a webpage was created and put up publicly for 45 days to gather information from anybody who had a brick downtown. They could fill out their information online, and it would all be compiled into another Excel database that we would then comb through to see what that interest entailed. At that time, 100 bricks had been removed and stored as of July 1st because they were posing a hazard downtown, and so those were replaced with pavers. And with the recommendation, once that 45 days was closed, we were going to assemble a volunteer committee that would help go through those and make sure they were in street location order and get those back to the individuals who submitted their interest. Another recommendation that was put forward was to develop a digital memorial wall that could be placed on the city of Kerrville's website and other digitally-related resources specific to downtown. And that would just capture all of the data we currently had on those who purchased bricks and show photos before those were removed, just to keep that memory. The next discusses the near-term action plan that the city has. The first part is to facilitate the retrieval and storage of all of the bricks in street location order at a city-owned facility. So they will not, would not be disposed of, they would just be stored temporarily until they could get back to their owner or relocated. The intention was to replace the bricks with pavers in the interim and then replace those areas with stamped concrete at a later date. We have been notified that our chances of receiving that CDBG grant funding for the downtown pedestrian and sidewalk repair are very high. So we will utilize the allocated funding from that grant award towards the damaged tree wells and the identified sidewalk safety issues as designated in our application. The next slide goes over the feedback of the first action phase that was detailed in that recommendation. So we did post on social media and in the newspapers that we were going to be doing this process, and that sparked the collection of data. Further research has been done into alternative relocation sites for the bricks by city staff as a result of that interest. The plans for removal and storage have been temporarily paused. Interest in the bricks being returned has resulted in roughly 350 bricks that have been claimed currently for retrieval. And out of that interest, it's been determined that less than 20 bricks requested for retrieval were deemed unreadable or damaged per our records. And that nearly 75% of the requests cannot be definitively linked to the original purchaser, per our records. So basically, we, we have 75% of those bricks that we can't verify if that person that wants it actually purchased it initially. So to go over the alternative relocation options, the first one is to the Museum of Western Art. They have a honor and memorial garden that they've put up. And they said that they can host the bricks at their site, that's at 1550 Bandera Highway. They currently have an existing memorial brick and tile program for those interested in a new brick. So anybody who'd like to continue with this program and purchase a brick may do so because they have something existing already. They also stated they could possibly assist the interested citizens whose bricks were recorded as damaged in the purchase of a new one at cost at their location. The only thing on this one, the city would need to cover the cost of removal and installation at their location.
And those would be laying down?
Yes.
And they could be walked on, yes?
Yes, it is an open walk, walking area.
Isn't that subject to more deterioration of those bricks?
Yes. And as, you can't, you can't tell very well on this picture, but the honor memorial garden actually is two, like a two-tiered section. So around that statue, they have an area, and then they actually have where you can step down a few steps, and it's completely open, and he said that we could relocate them there as well. The next option is at Arcadia Live. They've offered to relocate the bricks to the outer wall, to the theater surrounding the side door, like pictured, and they call this Antler Alley. So we would actually be mounting the bricks to the wall, so that would help with the preservation of the bricks moving forward, be easier to view, and they would not be located on the ground anymore. They mentioned they are able to cover the cost of all installation by donors who are willing to contribute to the cause. The only thing we do need to still work through on that is access issues for brick viewing, since that is a locked area currently.
What would be contributing to the cause? What would that entail?
So they just let us know that they have donors who have already stated they would pay to have the bricks put on the, on the wall and relocated from downtown. So we would pick up the bricks and take them there, but they would cover the cost of installing them on their wall.
And they would, they would pay for all of that?
Yes, that is what we've been told.
And the only drawback to the Arcadia option is the fact that that area is closed off at times?
Right.
Correct?
Right, so that's just something that we would need to work through to see what kind of options that they would have for public viewing.
Okay.
Currently, there's a gate in between this alleyway and the right-of-way at Water Street. And so we've reached out to see if there might be opportunities for that to be open during certain times of business hours, or by appointment, or other opportunities when folks might want to view bricks.
Okay.
Okay, and then the third option is going to the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center. It is currently being developed as a local history museum. There are no specifics on the location that have been determined just yet. And the city would be responsible for the removal, relocation, and ongoing maintenance of these bricks. And the feasibility of locating the bricks to a vertical location along the ramp that's currently under construction to the River Trail has not been studied. It may not be a possibility, given the time constraints and the extent of this effort in addition to accessibility and floodplain concerns.
Council, what do you think?
Well, in my opinion, option number two makes the most sense to me, because it takes away the cost for us to maintain them and relocate them and continue to maintain them in the future. And it puts it, it keeps it centrally located downtown, where they were originally meant to be.
to be. And, and I, I trust that the Arcadia would do a good job in, in making sure that those bricks retain the lifespan that they should by, you know, stacking them vertically up along the wall and not in the ground.
Looking at these three options, let's hypothetically say counsel goes with any one of the three. Would we then reach out to the purchaser and ask them, "Would you like your brick to be there?" Or would they all go there and regardless of whether the purchaser wants it there or not?
Well, the initial thought, right now, we do have the results from that webpage. I have contact information from everybody who submitted interest, and that would be something we would do is contact everybody to see if they would like for their brick to be relocated or if they would like to have it back. We do have the means to do that.
I do want to say that I was eating in a restaurant here, and a fellow came up to my table and said, "I want to, I want to brag on the city." He said, "Our, our late son's brick had been removed." And he called the city and, and you were contacted and got the brick, got it to them. Very, very appreciative. But Ms. Folkert, if, so what we're saying is, am I right that for, when we have a contact for, the bricks that we have contacts for, we know here's who put that there, they would be given the option of receiving that brick or going into the wall at the Arcadia or another place?
Correct. We have the means of, of asking that, yes.
Okay. All right.
I would want to, if, if we did the Arcadia, I would want to definitely, I think even before I said yes, work out how we could do the viewing, because I think, I think it's important that people be able to see them. And, and I, I kind of hate to see the limited time. I also like the Heart of the Hills idea. I realize that the city would pay for that, but I also think it would be, it would be an, I think that would be a, a good option. I know there's some questions with that yet that we'd have to, to do, take care of, but it would also be something that everybody could see all the time. So I, the first one I don't, is not, the bricks shouldn't be on the ground. Okay. I just don't think that they should. So I just have some more questions I, I think that I would like to have answers to before I said yes or no.
Yes, and Councilmember Eichner, my concern with the third option is the, the continued erosion from maybe the being in flood zone.
Well, that would be a question that I would like to, you know, how much, how much erosion is there from, from water? So.
The, did the Main Street Advisory Board make a recommendation regarding these options?
That was the, they, they offered support to the options at our meeting. They did like the Arcadia as an option, but we're also concerned about the public viewing times. So that is something we have already submitted an inquiry in to see what kind of logistics we could work out with them for that public viewing.
So you would come back to us with, with that info?
Definitely. I can most definitely do that.
Can I ask a question, City Manager Megan? With this agenda item, what, what were, what was the hope or expectation from us today as council? What were you, what were you looking for from, from us? I know we talked about, I, I'm not saying that, we, we said we wanted to talk more about this, but what, what were you thinking you would like to have at this point to, to continue your work?
Yeah. Well, this was a council-requested item a number of months back, and we wanted to bring back kind of the full history of it so that it was certainly on the public record. Absolutely. And also to garner direction on, you know, we have explored these options, but if none of these options were acceptable, then we certainly wanted to know that we needed to be looking at other options. So we wanted to gauge interest if there was additional information that was needed regarding these options, and also to get a little bit of a green light from you guys that as we progress, particularly the work that is contemplated with the CDBG grant, which we're hoping will be awarded this fall, that we can go ahead and start moving forward or continue to move forward with the removal of the bricks and storage while we work out the details on the options for relocation.
I would like questions, some questions on both of them, basically the questions that are there, the, the negatives and, and how they could possibly be overcome.
Okay.
Some additional questions. You said there is an opportunity for, or an option for somebody to buy another brick?
So that was offered through the Heart of the Hills. I mean, I'm sorry, the, the museum, because they have an existing program.
What kind of brick would those be?
I'm not sure what type of, exactly what type of brick that they're using, but yeah, they did not.
Better, better quality.
Yes.
But for today's purposes, would we all feel in general that the, the Museum of Western Art would be something to eliminate from moving forward with? I mean, I, I personally think that putting, laying the bricks back down on the ground and not in a central location are pretty big deterrents to using that site. And I would be comfortable taking that one off the table right now, personally.
Absolutely, yes. I did think they should.
And it sounds like the other two options have some questions that maybe those answers would be able to bring forth the final solution to what council wanted to do.
I think if we can just get definitive direction that you guys are comfortable in removing them right now and having us store them, that helps us continue to move that project forward, and then we'll search down some additional information.
I would like the public to know that we will be doing one of these options. If feasible, that we are storing them, and maybe we don't have the final solution, but it's not, it's, it's, this is not the end of the process, and that we have listened and heard from our constituents that they wanted this to be important, and we're making this important, and we're asking more questions. I just don't want those bricks to start coming up again and for the city to be faced with the same situation it was faced with before, with all of the criticisms and attacks. So I'd like to be in front of that piece, and I'd like to have it publicly out there that, that there is a plan, and we are logistically still working through some issues on, on two separate locations at this point.
And ultimately, direction will have to come back before council.
Sure.
Because either there'll have to be an amendment to an agreement with Arcadia to better understand how that accessibility and how that works, or in some type of construction effort related to the Heritage Center, which of course will have a cost to it that the council would more than likely have to approve.
Yeah, but before we start moving those, let's, let's make sure we get that information in the newspaper, in the public, before anybody starts, like, picking them up again.
Is there some way to put a sign, something as the bricks are being taken up out there that says, you know, temporarily going to be stored, protected, and, and replaced somewhere? So that someone who's walking along the street and sees them gone can say, "Oh, okay."
Absolutely. And we can actually provide the web link, because we have a web link where Megan has provided an update, very similar to your presentation, and so we can, we can have that on that information.
On that, that would be great.
Sure.
Let me say, by the way, it sounds like we may eliminate the Museum of Western Art as a possibility, and for several reasons that Ms. Clarkson mentioned. I do want to thank Museum of Western Art for their offer and interest, and they just had a great weekend, and that is such a plus for this community.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think we should, we owe a thanks to all the people who provided options for us. And I would just hope that we always consider, we want to consider, of course, in making sure we fulfill the intent of the purchasers, which was to have it in the downtown area, you know, to be viewed that way. Unfortunately, I think we can all agree, this was an unfortunate situation, and so I hope we can learn something of whatever it is. I know there wasn't a perpetual cause in, in the purchase order and all that kind of stuff that was done, but it's unfortunate to see this happen. I'm glad that we're looking at steps to, to fix it, but hopefully we can learn from this in the future.
And we will, or the city will, anyone who wanted to have a brick redone to be placed wherever they go permanently, will the city have one made? Can, is that a possibility?
We'll have to evaluate that. Right now, we don't have that option, but we certainly can explore it. Some of the concern would be matching those bricks. It's a little bit different than the bricks that are currently at Museum of Western Art, but we can explore that as well, if that's a desire of the council.
I would like to see us do that, because I think, I think we owe those people if they would like to have one there.
Yeah, and there's what, 305 bricks right now that are demolished or, I think something deteriorated?
There's about 303, and then just to reiterate, in the interest that we received, under 15 were unreadable. So we, the, out of the interest that we did receive from the community, there was not a very large number whose bricks were damaged that we can tell.
Yeah, because I, I agree with you. I think that we ought to take an active role in, in replacing those.
Okay, I think we've given the staff some ideas to work on and come back to us, and we'll save time for the ethics policy discussion, and.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Garcia, you had asked for this. Do you want to begin?
Yes, actually, the item that I requested is going to be at the regular meeting. This one, I think, was requested by you and Councilmember Clarkson, so I'll wait to, to the regular meeting for mine.
Well, so the reason I made this request is because this workshop item is a discussion piece, and so that the things that we discuss during workshop can be acted on in the council meeting if we all want to make any changes. So my intent for this item is to get the discussion pieces out at this time, and then to take action at the meeting if we need to.
If I may ask a question? Your intent was not to have a workshop and then go into a regular meeting and make a decision. It would be, talk about it, and then it would go on a later schedule.
Okay, so here's what, here's what happened. Basically, as, as a body, we, we agreed to put in a December meeting of a workshop. We all sat in here and agreed via voting that we would do that in December. And then I saw an agenda a couple of weeks later that all of a sudden was pushing this item up into a September regular meeting, which is not something that I had approved. And I had approved based on us workshopping the item before taking any action. So I asked for a cosponsor to get in on the workshop for the intent of workshopping the item for discussion purposes, and then any action during the regular meeting.
But the same meeting for?
I wasn't, I just, that was, that was what happened, was that Councilmember Garcia and, and Councilmember Hughes had cosponsored this item to go on the regular meeting, for this meeting. So I, I, that was my only opportunity.
Yeah, and I'll just address that point real quick. You're right. I, during, I think it was back in, I don't know, one of our previous meetings, I asked for it to be on the December meeting. I mistakenly said December when I meant September, so that was my mistake. I even had in my notes, September. I don't know why I said December. So that was just an error on my part, and so in order to try to just fix that, and it was going to be at the second meeting in December, which we're looking at canceling anyways, so I wanted to bring that earlier before we got to the holidays and got all that stuff, and we weren't even going to have a, a meeting on the second Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday in December, so trying to remove that. So that's why I brought it back and requested a sponsorship for, for that. So that was the intention. So I do apologize that. It was, I did say December, and it's on the September one.
So that was where I was the star council member, and this is also a policies and procedures thing, but going through all of this, and this is ethics policy, but to have that as a discussion since we are workshopping this item. I, I, I'm not really a fan of, of putting items on agendas after meetings with a cosponsor. I think that's just a kind of a workaround that we don't need to have in general. I don't, I don't really like that because I didn't really like the idea of agreeing to something and then having what I actually voted on pooled and like moved to somewhere else, because we did that in a, in a group meeting session. And so that, that to me, although we're talking ethics, it kind of works into policies, procedure slash ethics. If we're going to all vote on something, then I don't think that we go and undermine that behind the scenes by moving something around after we've had a public vote on it.
Yeah, my intention wasn't to undermine anybody, though.
Well, but that's, but do you understand the, how that, how that can be perceived, though?
Sure, babe.
But you're, but we said we, we all agreed December, and then all of a sudden it's on September, and that's not what we publicly agreed to. I don't like that. I don't think that, I don't, it doesn't seem transparent to me, and I don't know that, I'm not trying to speak to your intent. I just don't know that in the time I've been on council that that's actually something that we really need to, to utilize. I, I think items for future agendas seems pretty sufficient for practically all purposes, if not all purposes. But that's not really going through this line by line. That's just kind of working off of where this conversation started.
So would that come in the policies and procedures?
That is a policy and procedure that I would recommend that we look back on. Do we really need to have another vehicle for putting items on the agenda that's not a consensus item?
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. But for now, we've got the ethics policy to be considered in the workshop. Any changes that you see that should be made?
Do you have any changes on, on page one that, that you would like to discuss?
No, I'll wait till the regular meeting for, for some of those.
Oh, I would like to discuss everything that we would consider acting on at the regular meeting, so I have time to digest it.
I may not be, I may not suggest any revisions at the regular meeting.
Okay. This is a discussion, and the, and the action is at the regular meeting, so if there are items for discussion, that's what my point of having this right now is. I don't intend to have it as a discussion again at the regular meeting.
I agree. Now is the time for discussion.
And Councilmember Garcia, when you first asked for sponsorship for this ethics policy, you said you didn't, you, of course, you stated December timeframe, and you also stated that you didn't care whether it was in a regular meeting or in a workshop. And so I was planning on doing this in a workshop in December. And to hear now that, that you don't even want to have a discussion unless it's in the regular meeting, I find that just a little counter-conducive to your statements that we could address it in a workshop, which is what you said when you originally asked for sponsorship.
Well, and if you remember what, we, we had a discussion before about, and Mayor, I don't know if we want to go too long on this subject without getting to the policies because we're getting a little off-topic here, but we did have a discussion before about the frequency and the use of our workshops, and one of the statements that I made at that meeting was the fact that if we have an item that's on our workshop agenda as well as on the very next regular meeting agenda, I'm not usually in favor of having all the discussion happen there and then taking action in the regular meeting. The spirit of everything that we should be doing is to be transparent and open.
This is a transparent and open meeting.
Excuse me, excuse me. And so I feel that sometimes we have discussion before, right before the regular meeting, I don't see a problem with doing it at the same meeting. That was, that's the statement that I made, so I'll, I'll stick with that. And anything, like I said, I don't think there are going to be any revisions to it that's up to council, but.
Then we need to discuss it at the discussion section of this meeting.
Excuse me, I'm, Councilmember, I'm starting to talk. I don't know if there are going to be any revisions that I may bring up, but I'll be more than happy to discuss all of those later. So if there's anything else.
But Mr. Garcia, if we're going to discuss, this is the time to do that, and give us an idea of what, of the things that you are proposing to change or whatever it is that you're proposing.
Like I said, I'm not proposing any changes.
Okay.
And then we're going to discuss, and we're going to discuss in this particular meeting situation. We're in a public meeting right now.
Well, okay, let me say this. The situation we have is that this is on the workshop agenda and on the council agenda. So for this purpose, it is a matter of us and time for us to talk about any changes we see in the ethics policy. And I've been through this a number of times, and I personally think it is very well-written. It is comprehensive. It's fair. And, and the other thing in terms of transparency, it's open to the public to see both the ethics and the procedures that we follow. And so I'm, so I'm wondering, do any, do, do any of you, other than Mr. Garcia, have anything you want to change or suggest? you want to change or suggest to change in this?
Well, if y'all'd like to look at page two, I just made some notes because as I was mentioning, and I, and I mentioned to the city manager as well when I had a conversation with him, I don't, there's one thing maybe that I found on here that I would like to clarify, but I do think this is a good exercise in talking through how we do things and make sure that we all, as a council, understand and agree to what we all believe to be how we operate ethically. And on section B, comply with laws, this is page two at the top, where we talk about the city officials shall comply with the laws of the nation state, et cetera. Let me see. Okay, that last part, that where after the word city official, where it starts, regardless of whether it is created on a personal electronic device or with a personal email account, is subject to public disclosure under the Texas Public Information Act. I just wanted to make, I just wanted to kind of share my opinion, which is that if we're using electronic devices during meetings, the electronic device that's been given to us by the city has a place for notes within each item. We can also access the internet and we can also access our email. So to me, I think the most transparent thing I can do as a council member, if I'm using an electronic device, is to use this electronic device instead of using any. I have my phone here. That's for emergencies if my family calls. I don't use it or rely on it. I don't use any other personal devices because everything that I need to access from the city comes from a city device. And that way, when it's subject to the Public Meetings Act, if I've taken notes, I've taken it on a city device. If I don't have multiple places and multiple, multiple locations, I wouldn't recommend that we have to make any decisions about what we can or cannot have. But I would say that I just find it interesting. I just don't know that we, that, I just don't know why we, we need to rely on multiple electronic devices for the purposes of information during, during our meetings.
And they are subject to the Texas Public Information Act, so.
They are.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
On section C, on civility, I was looking at that, and there was a part that I'm not sure what, that we might want to move. This was where I was actually looking at a change on interrupting other speakers. Where on section E, it says, "City Council shall refrain from interrupting other speakers." And then it just makes a comma there. And, and I would just point out that there are times where public speakers may be using slanderous language, they may be going over the allotted time, or they may not be speaking on the subject at hand. So I don't want that item to be looked at as something that says that under no circumstances is, are we able to not communicate, you know, not communicate that this is not appropriate right now for a discussion. So I didn't know if that needed to be put in as just a clarification or change, just to make it clear. I don't want any of us to ever feel like we don't have that ability if it's, you know, for a specific reason to, to do, to do so.
Yeah, that comes a point at time.
And that was kind of, that's under meeting attendance, but it's really kind of under civility, but it's, the, where I was reading from is actually under meeting attendance. So there's kind of a little, a little wonky there, so.
Well, no, I was just going to say that there are occasions where there may need to be an interruption.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true.
So how would you suggest rewording that?
Well, I, I just put in there, unless they are, unless, unless there are personal attacks or libelous or slanderous attacks being made.
Okay, just add to it.
Unless the speaker's going over the allotted time or not speaking on the subject matter at hand.
Right.
And I, that was, that was, those were the items that came into my mind when I was thinking about that. I, and I don't know if that's comprehensive in nature, but so.
I think our procedural rules cover that pretty well.
They do.
Yeah, it sets a time limit, and then, of course, we can enforce the rules.
That's correct. I'm just talking about clarity of the ethics policy to the procedural rules. I don't want the one to be used in deference to another if one says one thing.
On civility and meeting attendance, are you recommending a change?
I mean, it could even be that we say, as, as, you know, you could even refer to policies and procedures of city council.
Could we ask, like to maybe clarify that?
City attorney, would you, any, any recommendations?
Should we point to the procedures, the policies and procedures, or should we absolutely spell out, or should we just move, remove interrupting other speakers? What is your recommendation?
That's up to council. This is obviously, there, there's some overlap here between your meeting rules. If you want to, you know, move, move some of the more procedural meeting requirements from the ethics over into the meeting rules, you could do that. It's really up to you.
I just don't want them to be in conflict, is all. And the easiest way for them not to be in conflict is fine with me.
We could, so I would look at, maybe we could either remove that section altogether because it's already covered in our procedural rules, or right above it, section D says, "City officials shall perform their duties in accordance with the process and rules of order established by the city council," which governs the public deliberation of public policy issues. So maybe that would cover it, too?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wait, remove what?
E.
I'm saying maybe if we, if you wanted, so there was no inconsistencies, what Councilmember Clarkson was saying is to remove the, I don't know, the second sentence, maybe, "City officials shall refrain from interrupting other speakers," because that's already covered in our procedural rules, and we could just remove that. We could also leave it in, and section D right above it already covers the fact that we need to also abide by the rules and procedures that we adopt.
Yeah, I would be for leaving the, the C and their own civility. I think that's, I think that's important. And it talks about courtesy, civility, and collegiality.
Right, and the actual item where the words interrupting other speakers actually shows up in meeting attendance, which is a bit odd.
Oh, that is, yeah.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
So maybe that would go under C.
It was, it was a little awkward, I think, from.
If, if.
Yeah, maybe just move it to C.
Last, last sentence up as the last sentence of civility?
Yeah.
No, the last sentence on E, right?
The last sentence on E.
On B?
That talks about interrupting speakers.
Just move it to C.
Yeah, because it covers civility, I guess.
That's fine.
Wait.
So the last, so the last sentence on sections E, meeting attendance, that starts with "City officials shall refrain from," move that whole sentence as the last sentence on section C.
Section B?
C.
D?
So y'all, so.
EC.
By leaving that sentence and just moving it to another section, no one here finds any, finds any inconsistency that is troublesome beyond that.
No.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
All right, then we can move on. I will, then, in the regular meeting, I will make that recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on two?
For me, item, I've got something on item F, and it's just, it's just a subject, it's not something that's a recommended change, it's a discussion item. And it was just, I just had a question, and I talked, and I've talked through this in my own mind, I've talked through this with, with Mark McDaniel, with EA, and it's just about how we make requests and ask questions. And it just, there's not a way to put this to a rule, but just in that, to be mindful of the city's process and the time that they're, you know, spending in the regular course of their business day. And just being respectful of what a reasonable time is and the, you know, and I even talked to EA yesterday because when I talked to Mark, when I first talked to Mark, and there's some policies and procedures that go along this with, but, but how we ask those questions and when are we asking a question versus making sure we're not directing staff because that's the purview of the city manager. And if I'm asking a question, though, to like planning or something, is it okay for me to ask Drew and copy EA, you know, and just making sure that I understand for me clearly that what I do personally is if I know that I've got a question designed for, for Drew or whoever I think it's designed for, that it's okay with EA, with Mr. Hobbie, for me to include that direct person and to copy him on it, but not to make a, only to ask questions, but not to direct staff.
Not make direct.
Let me ask you this. If, if we added that, "Should submit their question to the appropriate staff person for research and response prior to the meeting," something like in a reasonable time?
And what is, yeah.
That didn't find reasonable time.
I know, I know, and that's, that's why I don't know that you can put words, I mean, I don't know that you can put those on there. It was just something that I, I would, I would just, you know, to, to think and talk about.
Okay, all right.
I mean, what, what do you think?
Well, I think, I think if we're all aware that when we come with a request, staff has got to have time to fulfill that request, given their other, their existing duties and deadlines and everything else. So I think it's really a matter of courtesy.
Yeah, I think those requests should come, should go to the city manager.
Absolutely, they should go through the city manager.
He directs staff.
Yes.
So, do you prefer, Mr. Hobbie, like, anytime we have a question, to just direct it to you and you're going to distribute it out? Or what's your, what's, what's staff and what's your personal preference? I think it's a good time to ask the question, I guess, you know?
Sure. Yeah, well, I think, you know, certainly that last line within, and it talks about the case of the city council, the question should be admitted to the city manager. Certainly, I don't want to stand in the way of you guys getting, if it's a, I think we're all reasonable adults, we can, you know, if the question is relatively straightforward for a meeting and in the essence of time, if I'm, you know, at least carbon copied on it, you know, I, I think, you know, council has the ability to differentiate between, you know, a, an administrative request versus, you know, a pretty perfunctory question, right? And I, I think it's important, too, to reference a little bit further back within this same document about the policy role of city officials, right? And there's a very clear line that says, "City officials therefore should not interfere with the administrative functions of the city or the professional duties of the city staff," right? And so, you know, I think there just has to be a recognition of time constraints and other duties that, that, you know, city staff may be performing, you know, at any time, but particularly on the Mondays and Tuesdays in advance of council meetings. But we also recognize that you guys get these agendas and these packets on a Friday, and you've got, you know, a little over 72 hours, and you've got your own lives, too, and so questions come up, and we want those questions to be answered. And so I think just a recognition that the more time that we have to be able to prepare and answer for you, to get you that information so you can make a wise policy decision at a council meeting, the better.
Well, but I think there's a difference, I'm sorry.
Greg, no, go ahead.
Between a question and a directive.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, and a directive needs to go to you. No questions asked.
That's correct.
And, but questions, I think, just out of respect for you and your position, you also need to be copied on questions.
Absolutely.
And I will say, you're not old enough to know about carbon copies.
I am, I'm the old triple K.
Yeah, yeah.
If I may ask, Kim, I was a little confused on going back to B and the business of a personal electronic device. And I heard you say something about a meeting. Are you saying that in a meeting, we only have a city?
Well, no, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, just an observation and belief, I think that the best ethical policy for me as a council member is to use one electronic device because I personally know that I can record notes on my meeting agendas on this device. I can check my email, I can get everything, I can get everything done that I need to do. And I think if we're going to be the most transparent we can be, and not something to write in, I'm just saying best practices of ethical behavior in council meetings.
That simply we stick to the city I pass.
I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that we need to put it in writing, but I, I hold myself to that standard.
It's not a requirement because whatever we bring home is, is subject to public information. So what about page three?
Before we go on, Councilmember Garcia, did you have items of discussion on page two?
No, uh, no.
No, okay.
All right, page three.
When we're talking about, this was another one just to talk about when we're talking about, because I didn't know this when we first went into our first executive session? Is that the right word?
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't realize this because I remember almost walking out with a document that we had in executive session. And I, and I know that it doesn't spell that all out, but it is kind of, it is kind of a strange animal to go into your first executive session and to know, like, what that looks like, it feels like, and how you're supposed to behave and act in that environment. And so it was always my understanding that all papers are to be returned. Nothing is to be recorded, nothing is to be photographed. And of course, we all know that, that we are not to speak outside of executive sessions of items of, of privacy, but, but just thinking about myself being in that first meeting and it felt a little bit awkward when I was walking out, and it was like, can you give me that back? And is that everybody's same understanding of how we function in an executive session?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Don't take that, don't take anything in, don't, don't take it out, don't, don't photograph, don't video, don't, don't.
No questions.
Yeah.
And even, you know, documents of, that are confidential, that have to do with, with the attorney, with, with legal things, those should, I feel, those should only be viewed in Mike's office, that they should not be emailed to us. Now, there are times when he sends us information for a meeting to prepare for it, but, but just for, you know, for documents that are, in general, that somebody might want, those are documents that shouldn't be going home because, again, those, those are confidential. They shouldn't be in our homes, and if we need to see them, we go to see the attorney.
Yeah, agree. And that keeps us safe, too.
Exactly, exactly, it keeps us safe.
Okay, what about number three, conflicts of interest and disclosure? Anything there?
Do you have anything there?
No, no, I don't see anything there.
Any discussion items there?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
Nothing tonight will be discussed about conflicts of interest?
Not right now.
No, at the reg, this is the discussion time.
I may have some additional information.
Then let's, let's discuss what you would talk about.
I'll go ahead and wait till the regular meeting, thank you.
Mayor? We've already, we've already said.
No, no, no. It is, it is on the workshop agenda and it's on the general agenda. So the way it's set up, Mr. Garcia has an option not to tell us what he wants to talk about until the, until the meeting tonight.
So as a council, and when we had a consensus that we, as a council, wanted to discuss in this and take action in the other, and we had a consensus on that?
In this, in this instance, you've got it on both the workshop and the council agenda.
Can I ask you why you don't want to share this in a workshop setting?
I'd just like it to be during a regular meeting.
Why?
Usually, well, like I said before, with everything that we discuss in a workshop, I think a lot of it should be in the regular meeting anyways.
What's, with this, what, this is a public meeting. I, I'm still not, I'm having a hard time, like, I'm just hoping that you're not trying to set us up for something in a regular meeting because this is designated for time for us to have a discussion.
Right, no.
And it feels very disingenuous to refuse to discuss something now because it's not the right time of day for you when we're in a public meeting.
Okay, but we have, we have the situation this time. Don't know if we're going to have it again. We may need to look at procedures, but it's on both agendas. So we will discuss this now, and then whatever Mr. Garcia wants to say in the, in the council meeting, that's his prerogative. Anything on conflicts of interest and disclosure? Okay, I have one thing. At the chalk, last chalk festival, Buzzzy, Buzzzy gave me a free chopped beef sandwich, and I didn't disclose that.
He didn't disclose it to me.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
You owe her eight dollars.
Yeah, 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 all right.
And I think, I would just like to add that page six, the, the, what we signed, those points there are just things that, that we need to keep in front of us all the time.
Yep.
And that's the crux of that, of the whole.
The whole document.
Document, exactly. And so, and I think the last one there, "Treat all people with whom I come in contact in a manner I wish to be treated," and that's the only thing I would mention, Mr. Garcia, that if, you probably would like to hear our comments, and that's one of the reasons we like to hear your comments before the meeting, the regular meeting.
All right, okay, on page four, anything? All right. This, this is a minor matter on. This, this is a minor matter, an implementation, first sentence, as an expression of the expected standards of conduct for city officials. It says the policy is self-enforcing. I, that means this policy, right? Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I mean-
That's what it means, okay. May need to be clarified, but anyway. Okay, then, then that concludes on page five, what Ms. Eichner said, that last statement that we commit to, recognize the worth of city officials and employees, appreciate their individual talents, perspectives, and contributions, help create an atmosphere of respect and civility, conduct personal and public affairs with honesty, integrity, fairness, and respect for others, then respect the dignity and privacy of individuals and organizations, keep the common good as my highest purpose, and focus on achieving constructive solutions for public benefit, avoid and discourage conduct which is divisive or harmful to the best interests of the city, treat all people with whom I come in contact in a manner I wish to be treated. And we affirm that and sign that. Okay, before we end this workshop session, anything else on the ethics policy? All right? We are adjourned for the workshop session.
Do we have executive session?
We do, we have an executive session.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, we are, we are adjourned here and go to the executive session.
All right, we're going to meet a motion.
I will move that, we move into executive session for 551.071.
All right.
Anything else, Mike? That, that'll do it? I'll second.
Got a second? All right, all in favor, please let it be known by the raised hands. Okay, now we're adjourned from this session.